Ooh, roundhouse. Oh, roundhouse, 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 roundhouse. Wham! Oh, I got him. Oh, nope, hit me in the back. What is up everybody? That's right, it's my time at Portia time. That's a lot of time. Anyway, it's but we're back with my time at Portia. I love this game. Um, it's not something we usually play on the channel, I know, I know, but it's fun. It really is. And it's supposed to be released on the Nintendo Switch, and this would be a perfect game for the Nintendo Switch, in all honesty. And by the way, I found the mother of all freaking copper nodes. Holy crap. Look at this stuff. I've got data discs. I've got so much stuff. How do you unlock these? Costs 400 goals. I've got one. Well. So, uh, yeah, won't be unlocking any more inventory space anytime soon. So anyway, I've got these things called dried apple slices. We're gonna eat one of those. They restore your stamina. Now check this out. Look at that, 97. I can, I know you can see it over here. Check it out, 97. 119, that's awesome. There's actually a lot of stuff food-wise that'll do that for you. I didn't realize that, but hey, I figured there's some way. I was hoping that you couldn't just have to sleep. So you can progress in the game without having to go to sleep at all the damn time. That was what I was worried about. God, how much copper do I have? I didn't even look. I've got 50 copper right now. I want more. I just feel like that need is there for more. So how are you guys been doing? You know how I've been doing. I've been living the dream. That's right, baby. That is so right. Um, not really. Um, we've been just chilling and hanging out. We're still trying to recover from all the rain. But coming up for my daughter, I don't know where the hell I'm at. Oh, there we go. Well, I really kind of dug down into this. When we gotta go out of here, it's gonna be fun. But we've been dealing with archery stuff, and the archery season is coming close to an end almost. We've got state tournament this Friday. That's right, I will be in Hot Springs, Arkansas, at the, uh, State House Convention, or the convention center, the big one down there, for the tournament. I'm excited. I can't wait. I mean legitimately, and my daughter, she took first place in the tournament this weekend. Overall girl. It's insane. I'm so proud of her. I just am. And I'm bragging about her, I am. I never thought, I wouldn't, I'm not that type of person to brag, but you know what? I'm proud of her. She's worked hard for this. Just as I've worked hard for this copper, dammit. Come on, give me the copper. How much do we got now? I mean, I don't know when enough is enough, so I'm just gonna keep doing this for a second or two. I'm finding a ton of crap though. I'll have to show you some of the stuff I've found. It's insane, the stuff that you, you collect in this game. I mean, it's not just traditional resources. You collect a lot of stuff. I've been finding some tin down here too, so we're gonna be able to smelt some of that up. Well, I'm really working it here. How much stamina I got? I don't have much, so I gotta be careful. I think we got enough copper for right now. Okay, get off of that. What are you, what are you doing? Oh, can you not run through here? Oh crap, I need to figure out how to get out. Up. There we go. Boy, I really just boogered myself in here, didn't I? Oh, let, let that be a lesson. If you're mining in this game, you probably wanna do like a more traditional mine. And you know, I could have just did this right here too, by the way. I figured this out afterwards, but I was down in that hole having so much fun. So ores, the rocks will be the color of ore. I just had to beat on that. Now if you look, those little dots and stuff, oh, where they at? I don't see any. There's, usually there's yellow dots that tell you when there's objects and things to be found, special stuff. Sometimes ores, sometimes other things. There one, like that right down there. We'll have to do that one day. I did it a minute ago, and it's really, I mean, I didn't, I found, I'll show you. I found some of those data discs. Whoa. There we go. Now we're going back. I found some data disc, I found some eyeglass, I found a bunch of crap. Let's just look. So I found this. What is that? Old parts. I found some old parts, I found some data discs, which unlocked a quiz. I found a, I got my builder's license. But we did find some power stones too. And I found eyeglass? I don't know, I guess you used the crap. We did get a ton of, excuse me, we got a lot of copper. Oh, yes. So now we can start working on the bridge. And just hop over the fence and run out of town we go. You know, I love how childlike the game is. You know, it's fun. This is just a goofy, silly, let's just have a blast fun game. You don't have to worry about food and stuff only for stamina and things like that. So I mean, it's, it's kind of nice. It's relaxing. I don't need to go in there. There we go. Crafting, oh yeah, I forgot. Crafting the copper bars takes forever. So let's do this. We wanna craft copper. Refuel, confirm. We'll put that all in there. That'll give me two hours. God, how long is it gonna take us to craft copper? Is that all I can craft is tin? Or is that all it lets me craft? Okay, how much copper do I have now? Okay, that's weird. I've still got 81. One day and 56 minutes. Holy crap. Well, there we go. There we have it. Let's see what we can craft in the meantime. Holy Jesus almighty. So simple axe. That's just wood. What was that? Hazardous, from hazardous ruins and quarry. Or just picking it up off the ground, I thought. Sorry, I'm reading what it says about stone there. It's weird. Alright, so upgrade toolkit, bronze bar. Thought maybe I could make like a tin or something. What do we use tin for then, I wonder? I don't know, but I feel like I wanna make it all. So maybe that's what that is. Maybe tin is, turns into iron. No, I can make bron, how can I make bronze? Is that tin and copper? Oh, clever. Well, let's just cra, I can't craft it. Well, I can't do multiple crafting. Well, that sucks. Alright, so anyway, we've gotta make copper for that, but we can make bronze bars because we've got tin and copper. That's, that's good to know. We can make some better tools. Oh, I'm excited now. We're gonna get some tools. Is it already time to go to sleep? I don't feel like I need to yet. Let's look and see what else we can get into before we go to bed. I just, I feel like that's not right. We can make a tea table. Anybody interested? Oh, max stamina plus four. Oh, so you put it in your house. Oh, we need iron for that though. Wooden storage, I think we need that. So let's go get some wood real quick, because I wanna make storage to get rid of some stuff in my inventory. Because we're starting to fill up pretty quick like now. Am I gonna just hit stuff? Can I hit this one? Yeah. So if we get the bronze axe, we'll be able to take out the bigger trees. And I'm all about some, what are you doing? Oh, I don't have any more stamina. Crap. Well, so much for that. I ain't talking to you dude. I got, I gotta go to bed. I need stam. Did ours went up, didn't it? I think, we got a level, so it should have gone up. Yeah, it's 224 now. And asleep we go. It's impressive, impressive. So we've got the data disc we need to talk to Lee about. We've gotta build the bridge. And furniture maker, make copper blades. So let's look about making copper blades real quick in the crafting bench, because I can't remember exactly how much copper bars we need, but a lot of that should be done already. Yeah. Still making some more, is it? Still got five left. 10 hours, okay. We should be able to do this now. Am I missing something here? Or do I have to do it in there? Did I do it wrong? I don't think I did. No, I didn't. Okay. Let's look at our book here. Missions, we don't, we already know about that. Handbook. Blades. Well, she could just like search for it. Copper. Copper pipe. Oh, we're getting, oh, copper blade. Right there. Grinder level one. So we need a grinder. Is that what you're telling me? I think that is what you're telling me. What do I need to make a grinder here? Grinding stone. Oh, I need to go into my book first. Hold on. I gotta get used to this whole, you craft it there, but you still need a book and whatnot to put it together. Not a lot of games have been doing that. Usually it's you build out of a book or you build out of the workstation, you know? Let's see, uh, workshops. Grinder, there we go. We're gonna need three copper bars. We've got that. We're gonna need a grinding stone times two, and 10 stones. Old parts too. We've got everything. Holy crap. I'm excited. I don't know about you guys. Do we got the stone? We got the stone. Easy. We've got the copper. We got the old parts. What else did we need? I mean, this is too good to be true. Go back to my handbook there. We need the grinding stones. We gotta make the grinding stones. Well then, we get to craft something after all. Dude, excitement all over the place. Alright, grinding stone. Just wanna cra, I can craft up to 10. Craft two. I think 10's the max anything to let you craft, honestly. How long is it gonna take to make that? Oh, I got them. Okay. I like the instant stuff on some of it at least. Let's go back into our book. Let's go back to the handbook there. Alright, so assembly index. Grinder, check. Okay, that's what we were doing. So we, I just start putting it all down, I guess. Alrighty then, I think I can handle that. So copper bars, right there. Oh god, what is that? That's stone, oh, that's tin. Shit, we got a lot of stone. Holy crap. Stone back down there. Let's put the grinders back down there. And the old parts right there. There we go. Beautiful. Everything is great. Alright, there we go. Build this. Okay. Oh, I need to have the item selected. Come on, can't you be intuitive? What else do I need here? I need the grinding stone. Oh, there we go. Bam, we got a grinder, baby. Nothing illegal going on here. Alright, now we can put our grinder down. I guess I'm just gonna put it right here. Uh, look at that. Now we can craft those. So it takes two bars. Power stones? Oh my god. Um, okay, so yeah, power stones are important then. We're gonna need a lot of those. Holy, holy mess. Oh, there we go. Now we've got some going. We got another bar there. I don't think we got an extra in our inventory, do we? No, we don't. We do got some poo in our inventory. Alright, now next thing's next. Ha ha, say that again. Um, let's see here. I want to make a storage box. Wooden storage. We're gonna need some wood. Let's go get that wood like we're doing. Now that we can actually do it. Feels good, doesn't it? Give me that tree. I bet you'll take less hits to take things down too. Come on to me. There you go. I can't talk enough about the auto-collect process. It's great, it's great. How much wood did that give me though? Oh, plenty. Storage, here we come. The next step of evolution is about to begin. Oh yay, oh yay. Confirm. Yes, we have a storage box. Where's it at? Give me my storage box, dammit. Put you right there. What is this? Oh, tree sap. So we got so much crap. There's just so much stuff. I can't place you in here, can I? I'd like to keep my goods secure. I don't feel safe. Oh, and you will let me put it in here. That's awful nice of you. I can customize it too? Alright, so we will put that up. Cancel, can I just click it over? Oh, right-click works. Ha ha. We need to keep that. My builder's license, just in case they wanna check me. I don't need that, I don't need that. Don't need that. I don't need that. Don't need that. Power stone, we only got one left. Holy mess. Put that up for right now. We'll put that right there. I'll put a chest outside too. We'll need one. I think we're gonna need one. And that right there. Sweet. And the six right there. We really just don't know why I have all this stuff. So what does it do when I put the glove on? Oh, sweet. Oh, I need to be, I need to be fighting people with those on, dude. What was I thinking? I was doing it all wrong trying to beat up that dude. Maybe we oughta go rematch him, you think? I think I could whip his butt now. I'm getting up there. I'm leveling. There's more rock. Now what were we fixing to do? Ah! I'm gonna grab free, free woods, free wood. We're gonna head up here. And free stone too, I guess. More free wood. Wow, I'm just like, okay, look. Alright, so let's look at our journal entry here, because missions. Furniture maker, we gotta make the copper blades. Mysterious data disc. Talk with Lee. I'm not sure what this is. Maybe I should go talk with someone in the church. That's what it was. I gotta go up to the church. I had to go look to see where to go. Alright. And our stamina is alright, it's 212, so we can go do some more mining if we need to. God, walking up to this church is like a holy freaking nightmare. You remember. We've been there. We've done this. It's a beautiful view though, I'm not gonna lie. It's pretty nice. Hey, there's all the crazy chickens that attacked me. Middle note, don't pick up one of the chickens, you'll be okay. Yeah, don't do it. Just don't. It's not worth anything. Alright, come on, get up here. Hustle boy, hustle. It's the Church of Light. Uh, I'm not interrupting anything, am I? Oh, screw it, I'm gonna come up here. Good day, builder. Oh dear, a data disc. Why, yes it is. Do you know what, do you know what this is? Of course. This is the, what the agents used to stall. I'm not gonna do that. Information or technology is back to the age of corruption. It is highly dangerous because there's a chance this little item here can contain the blueprint for world destruction. Oh, that's nice to know. Can't be that bad, right? You're right. 18, 19, the age of darkness is probably just another fairy tale story to you. When I was young, my great-grandma told me firsthand accounts about the time before Peach. The time when peep folks lived in the ruins underground. She went days without food. Everyone fought. Imagine that. Yeah, that would kind of suck. You guys have kind of re-evolved again, haven't you? You know, I'm not trying to scare you, but if there's a reality of your builder business are spread around the world waiting to be stumbled upon. In the case of research center in cities like Vega Five, expedited in their recovery, their calamity strike again. Oh, that sucks. So basically, you gotta be careful. Seek out and destroy all the data disc and other dangerous relics with the help of ruin divers such as yourself. So I can give these to you? What if I wanna use them? Possessions and vast amount of green technology learned throughout the ages. Wait a minute. I know it, I know that, I know that look. The church isn't against the use of good technology. Share me with. Do you know how to plant? I know how to plant crops. I'm not gonna go there. I already know that was a trap. I didn't fall for it, notice. Okay, great. I'm, take the disc and give you some seeds. So you're gonna give me some seeds for some discs? I feel like a drug transaction's going on, you know? I'm not really getting a good deal out of it either. Yeah. So did you take all my data disc? Oh, okay. Well, I need some of them. Oh, I'm not giving, donating. I'm trying to get up out of here. I got things to do. I got places to be, you know what I'm saying? Alright, come down here. Now we gotta run all the way back down. It is a pretty little jog though. There's two different ways to get down. It's craziness. See, I almost went the wrong way and went back up it. I fell for that trap one time. Not gonna do it again. Alright, so we've got blades. Go check on that. Did I get it? No. That's right, they gotta craft. Let's go see what they're done. I hope there's a way to start making some money, dude. Otherwise, I'm gonna start robbing folks. It's the only, oh, only thing I could think of to do. Oh, I totally missed the gate, didn't I? Boy, I'm off in la-la land on this one, aren't I? Oh, this no stamina. Run, boy, run. Uh-oh, we got a letter. From City Hall. An important announcement tonight's fireside meeting in Peach Plaza. Please make, please try to make it, make it 7pm sharp. That's my bedtime, dude. Okay, so let's see, what time is it? Do I have a time in the game anywhere? Oh, there it is down there. Good, we're good. I need one more blade. Alright, let's get this made. I wonder how long these power stones last though. That really worries me. You know what I'm saying? That will take an hour, hour, Jesus. Alright, so let's see here. Make copper blades, okay, build the bridge, place the bridgehead, place the bridge body. So what do we need for that? We need to look into that. Let's look and see if it's in our wonderful book, Mysteries. Oh, civil cutter? Holy crap. Wooden bridge body. Smelt it first, so we're gonna need stone brick, bronze plate. Wow. Bronze bar. We're gonna need a lot of stuff. For the bridgehead, we're just gonna need a lot of wooden wood planks and some copper bars. So we're gonna need a lot of freaking copper. So my job for the next couple of days is just crafting up a buttload of stuff. Well, while we're finishing up crafting, we need, we need more wood. So let's go grab another tree real quick. And with that, we'll make another storage chest to put out there, so we can have all of our wonderful goodies that we need to craft with in there. Oh my god. Uh, I can kick it though? Oh, kick the crap out of, give me that. Give me a purr. Oh, yeah. Give me all your pears. There we go. Are they just falling into my inventory, I hope? Okay, now what do these give me? I wanna know them. There they are. Rubber fruit, really? From kicking trees. Well, that's good to know. I kind of wondered. So it is a small fruit from trees can be used for rubber processing. Oh, so I can't even eat it. Well, that's still okay. It's still acceptable. And we know not to piss off these weird dudes down here. What is you? Snakeberries. Now those give you like hit points back. Yeah, restores 10 hit points. So that's good to know. We need, we need those every once in a while. God, what would I do for a small tree to build? What is this? Oh, it's a bunch of feces. I'm gonna need that eventually. Sad to say, I'm collecting animal crap. Alright, we're just gonna hit one of these trees then. Oh, we leveled up. Dude, look at us. We're making plays today. All the levels, all the action. I don't know if you guys can handle this episode. I know you're probably sitting on like the edge of your seats going, what are we, I just don't know what's gonna happen next. Because I don't either. It's, that's, that's the world we live in. Alright, let's go up here. How much wood do I got now? I've got 31, so we could go build another's chest. Let's go do that, because I wanna get my chest down. The chest is where we're gonna start putting all the components we need. Now, I, once I get that copper blade, we can go exchange that. That's not done. That's done. Alright, so let's go ahead and do that. Let's make the chest real quick, get it down out here. Oh, nope, that, there, yep, that craft, yep. Craft, yep, confirm, confirm, yep. So I have to make planks. There's a lot of stuff we still gotta do. I mean, what are, those are copper rounds, like more data disc, what the hell? There we go. Now let's look at our missions here, because I gotta figure out what the heck. Um, furniture maker. Polly's commission you to make some copper blades. You need to assemble a grinder in your homestead to make. Where the hell is this dude at? Let's go find him real quick. I can't, wish they'd tell you. Oh, he's over here. Damn it. I don't know where anybody lives. I guess this is a way to make you meet people in town. I'm anti-social by nature, so I do YouTube videos. I'm not very talkative in real life. I'm actually quite boring. I think the dude was down here. Let's see. My god, dude. That doesn't look like him. That don't look like him. Oh, there he is. Everything here will bring out the man in you. What are you waiting for? Okay. Smallish builder. So I guess you gotta like walk in there and give them to him. Alright, so what do we just get off of that? Relationship rep points. Wow, we got a rep now. You better watch out. We're actually got a rep against, yeah, look, what's up? Alright. I think this is gonna be my moment of glory. Oh, and he's not here, is he? Can I gather his stuff? Oh, I stole a copper bar from him. Can I go in his house? No. Ah ha. Higgins work, Higgins, your workshop sucks. Can I get anything else over here? Okay, I guess not. I can't even go, oh, that's the barber shop. I can't even go in the barber shop. That, dude, that looks so real until you walk up and you're like, aw, man, alright. Let's head back. What time is it? It's almost 7 o'clock. Well, you know, we might as well just hang around town for a little bit. I'm gonna wait till 7, we'll get to have the meeting, because I'm curious what this is gonna be about. Well, look, the gang's all here and it's a little early. So he's got to say.
Oh, right. You should get to know some of the people living in this town for your own benefit. I made a list of store owners within the city walls. You should go introduce yourself.
Uh-oh. Yeah, I know that jerk. I'm gonna punch him. Ah, I'll be good.
You're the new builder. I'm Gust.
Whoa, I thought that was a girl.
Tea, cake and all, but I'm busy, so, good day.
Wow, you are a wonderful jerk. Just chatting up. Well, that's good to know. It's good to know. Things are good, yeah. We'll leave.
Good evening, everyone. We've been having lots of panbat sightings recently. I know they're cute, but still, don't go near them. They're dangerous.
Really? You have to tell people that?
I've asked the civil corps to try something to scare them off, but I'm not holding up much hope. We all know what a panbat infestation's like. Sometimes, I wish I had a tank.
What the kind of things are these?
We've decided to proceed with the building of a bridge to Amber Island. A builder has already been picked for this project. Also, we are in preparation for the construction of the DD transportation system.
What the hell?
I'll be securing the funding over the coming weeks and pick a builder soon. Any donations are welcome.
DD transportation system?
What? How come I didn't hear about the bridge? When was this?
Oh, you jerk.
He's asking for money again.
Uh-oh.
Finally, we have a new builder in town this week who lives in the old workshop outside the city gate. Let's all give a warm welcome.
Yep, you won't say my name, damn it. Yay, me. Everybody likes me. Alright, we need to talk to Martha apparently. Let's interact.
When will Toby let me not worry for just one day?
Who's Toby?
When will Toby let me not wor-
Alright, we're gonna move on there. Oh, you got something to say to me?
Ah, welcome. If you're in need of house or workshop upgrades, this is the place to be.
Oh.
All you need to do is select a plan from the catalog book in our company.
Oh, okay, this is not the guy I thought it was. There's the guy I thought it was. Oh, roundhouse.
The missions, commissions, the more the better.
Alright, we're doing this. I feel like I have to avenge myself before we call it done for today. Can I get my weapons out? Oh, I can't use my boxing gloves when I fight him? Ooh, roundhouse. Oh, roundhouse, 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 roundhouse. Wham! Oh, I got him. Oh, nope, hit me in the back. Oh, yep, got the dive. You're not gonna get me that easy, buddy. Oh, got you in the back of the head even. Hell! You know what though? Although we lost that war, gonna tell you right now, ooh, ugh, I feel confident in our skills. They need to grow a little bit, but hey, you know what? That's okay. Can I get up here at all? Nope, I cannot. I've tried this, I think. I'm gonna do it again anyway, because I feel confident right now. I got my confidence back. He may have won, the battle, that is. But he has not won the war yet. I'm telling you, he's gonna go down. Fuel depleted. Nice to know that. Let's refill this sucker. I'm just gonna put it all in there. Let's go ahead and make some more. Craft it all up. Seven, confirm it. I got plenty of copper, so I'm not worried. It takes three per, I guess, that's fine. We're good to go. How much copper do I still have? So I still got 60. We're good. We're golden. Oh, alright, so anything in my inventory I need to keep. Now we also have one mission we can do later on. Mission, right here. We gotta do the mysterious data disc. Now there is a map, it's a nice thing. Uh, bandage exchange starts telling you stuff. Fishing rod. Broke the beginner's fishing rod, make a new one for him. So you can do all this stuff, and it tells you what you need to do. Like, I've got that over there to get a recipe. That's the bridge. It's nice. This is our little area we've got. Once we unlock the bridge though, we're gonna be vastly over. And we still have this area up in here we have not been to. That's the hazardous ruins and told us to stay out of there apparently. So anyway, I hope you guys enjoyed it. I like playing this game, so if you guys are not digging it, you don't wanna have nothing to do with it, you want me to stop showing videos of this, by all means, tell me. Just say, hey, nah, it's not my game. I know some of you've already said that, but anybody else not interested, I'm gonna keep playing it until you tell me not to. I'm just gonna put that out there, because I do enjoy it. It's a fun game. It's silly, it's goofy, it's entertaining. It's good. Anyway, I hope you guys enjoyed the video. This has been my time at Portia, and I hope you enjoyed our time together. That's right, endearing moments are here. I've been your wonderful host, Bloodstalker. If you first, if you liked the video, I gotta, I gotta learn how to do this right. If you liked the video, please hit that thumbs up, thumbs up for me. I can't even speak English today. Please hit the button that goes up. If it's your first time stopping by, you know you wanna hit subscribe. This is a trend record of a thing happening right now. And if you don't get on board now, you're not gonna have a good front row seat. So anyway, till next time. Peace out, y'all. Peace out, y'all.